Good evening all and welcome to the Monday, March 21st, regular meeting of the Town of Easton Planning and Zoning Board. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, as amended by Governor Baker on February 12th, 2022, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote and remote attendance shall count towards quorum. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To use Zoom, you need to use the link on the agenda, which can be found in the calendar or the front page of the town's website. While board members and applicants will be on video and audio, public participants will join the webinar as attendees, meaning they are muted with no video feed from them. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public can be recognized by using the raised hand function on Zoom or make a request with the Q and A function. If you are joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Board members are asked to announce themselves were making a motion and second so that it will be clear to the audience and minute takers who made the motion. And all votes will be by roll call. To ensure we have a quorum, we will now have a roll call. Greg Strange, present.
Chris Anderson here.
Bob Stetson here. I almost got him here.
Al Sarah here.
All right, I think that was everybody kind of cut up. So first up, we have Continue Public Hearing, 560 Fountain Street, Sawmill Village, request to continue to April 4th. If someone would like to make that motion.
Make a motion to continue to April 4th.
That's in second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, Strange, I.
Al Sarah.
I.
Anderson, I.
Very good. Stephanie, Old Forge going to the April 4th as well?
Yes, yep.
So we have the same, we need a motion to continue to April 4th, 20 South Street, Old Forge Common Special Permit, Flexible Development.
Motion to April 4th.
A second.
Suzanne, I'll let you fight out. Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, Strange, I.
Anderson, I.
Al Sarah, I.
Stetson recuse.
Very bien. All right, next up, we have a public hearing. Oh, so who's going to act as clerk? We have a public hearing for 39 R. Paquonicat, defended a subdivision. Stephanie, do you have it? Do you want to read it in?
I can read it.
I don't have the notice, so.
Okay, let's see. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 41, Section 81 dash T, MGL, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on March 21st, 2022 at 6:30 PM to be held remotely on the following application from John K. Holmgren, J.K. Holmgren Engineering, Inc. On behalf of Christine O'Reilly and Aaron Wiluka for definitive subdivision for the creation of a two lot subdivision of 39 R. Paquonicat Avenue, assessors map 10 R. Lot 33 and Lot 33A. This meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom. The virtual meeting link will be contained within the posted agenda at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting. A copy of the application and plan may be viewed on the town website. This notice is also available at www.masspublicnotices.org.
Thank you. All right, so 39 R. Paquonicat. Scott, are you the presenter?
Yes, sir, I believe I am.
All right, so just name and address for the record, please, and the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, Scott Farrier, J.K. Holmgren, 1024 Pearl Street, Brockton Matt, representing Aaron and Christine Wiluka for their lot subdivision at 39 R. Paquonicat Ave. I also believe Aaron on board and also Walter Marioni is available as well, Mr. Chairman. If you have any really key conditions, he can handle them. What we have before you, the definitive subdivision of a piece of property, I am sorry about that, that we were before you folks with back in the fall with a preliminary subdivision.
Motion to deny.
People can be quiet all night, as soon as I get on, he starts yapping. All right, so it's a two lot definitive, Mr. Chairman, very similar to the preliminary. Really, nothing has changed from the, from the end of the hearings that we had with you folks. You'll remember we had a lot of back and forth regarding access for both lots, the Wilukas' existing house and the newly created Lot A, originally was going to come off of Guinevere Road. After discussion, we decided to keep the existing home and allow it to use its existing access easement out to Paquonicat. So the only driveway, new driveway would be for the house on Lot A off of Guinevere. So again, we, we made those adjustments during the preliminary. As I said, Mr. Chairman, everything else is pretty much the same as we left previously, so I think we can just answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay. Stephanie, I know you had a few things in your report. You want to start us off?
Sure. So again, the board saw this as a preliminary subdivision. They are requesting a number of waivers from the roadway construction standards that generally makes sense. I mean, essentially what they're proposing here is a layout, a layout of a cul-de-sac to provide frontage, but access from Guinevere Road is going to be by a driveway over that undeveloped cul-de-sac. A couple of questions. I mean, there were just some plan requirements that weren't provided. There's no subdivision name provided. It's, it's own little thing. I don't know what you might call it. All other information has been provided. The, let's see, plans do not show the width of Guinevere Road, which is required on our plans. It does show existing, it only shows the existing buildings. It does not show a proposed footprint for the, I believe, for the new construction. I'm sorry, it does. I don't know if that was a carryover. Most, most importantly, the plans do not show proposed grading. And, you know, there's no formal stormwater proposed, primarily that's associated with the roadway. But I suggest that the applicant provide post-development elevations that support a conclusion that the rate and volume of the runoff will not increase beyond the current conditions.
We will certainly, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Scott?
We will certainly do that, make those revisions and add that information to the plan.
Okay, thanks.
Another, oh, I'm sorry. So they called this a two lot subdivision, but the board will remember during the preliminary subdivision process, the decision indicated that the existing house lot that will have frontage on Guinevere Road or on this new cul-de-sac is served, access is served from Paquonicat Avenue, and the decision required that that continue to be the access point for this lot and that only one new lot is being created for the Guinevere Road subdivision. So that should be an ongoing condition with the, any decision issued by the planning board for the definitive subdivision. And I think that was, that was pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Board members, questions or comments for the applicant?
And does Scott want to share his screen to show the subdivision for the benefit of the board members and any members of the public?
I would love to try that, Stephanie. There we go. Did we see it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Look at that. I think the last time you tried that, we ended up seeing Pac-Man, so heck of a, heck of a improvement.
It's the first time in two years I've been able to do it, Mr. Chairman, so pretty happy. COVID's over and we're going to go back to in-person meetings, but I finally got it figured out.
COVID's over, COVID's never going to be over. So, okay, so anyway, so board members, I hadn't heard it. Did anybody have any, any questions or comments regarding this or Stephanie's comments? Okay, so here now, I'll chime in quickly. The only thing, as a back, during one of our multiple meetings on this, whether it was onsite or not, I had mentioned that I thought it would, I thought it would be wise to add some, some plantings in front of the proposed house on Lot A, sort of in the vicinity of the, the corner of number 43. Basically, in the front yard, just so we wouldn't have a house right in someone's backyard. And I thought that was received positively, but I just don't see that on here, so.
I will certainly add that, Mr. Chairman.
And then I thought, I remember when we had the whole discussion that Stephanie kind of just touched on about the driveway only for Lot A. And I thought we'd agreed that the driveway where, excuse me, where it enters Guinevere, the driveway was going to be more in, in the center of that opening, not much pushed to the side. That way, ensuring that another driveway couldn't be added, even though we don't allow more than one driveway within 30 feet anyways, but. I thought that's what we had come up with. You guys, correct me if I'm wrong. I remember there was talk about, oh, put a fence section, put some boulders or something, and then we said, why don't we just put the road right in the middle? Or the driveway?
Mr. Chair, I was going to mention that because one of the waivers from planting strips, wasn't sure, it's number 13 there, 23E. They are asking for waiver from planting, and I don't know if the planted strips is. I don't think it is. This is just planting for privacy in between the two houses.
Right. We'll certainly provide that planting and move the driveway.
Okay, so before I throw one last, so no one, board members, everybody's good before I throw it out to the public? All right, so members of the public, if you have any questions or comments, please raise your hand. And when, when recognized, please name an address for the record. And so I see Ann Grant, I saw that go up first, and then Harry Corderi. And forgive me, Harry, if I didn't get your name quite right.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, Ann Grant, 40th Guinevere. It would be really helpful if you could explain what, what's going on in the process for us. I'm, I'm just not sure I'm completely following. Is this the stage at which you would allow all of these 19 waivers? Because I have some additional questions about those, those waivers too. Or is this like not, we're not there yet?
Yes, no, this public hearing is for a proposed subdivision. And yeah, the, the requested waivers are part of their, part of their application. So yeah, if you want to address those, this is, this is the time.
Okay, so I, I've noticed a few of them that concern me. I mean, I know that somebody's already mentioned the storm drainage issue. I'm curious about this hydrogeologic study one and the environmental impact study. I don't want to, I don't want to steal Harry's thunder, because I think he's going to mention this. But, you know, it is a former foundry. Does that matter to the board that there be some study about whether it's safe to do construction there? Another question is, I know that in the other development that's being created across the streets that's behind Lancelot, there's some issues with runoff, you know, groundwater and things like that. So I don't think we should assume that it's because it's one dwelling that there won't be issues like that. And this is a lot that is surrounded, at least has three homes around it. So I'm curious about that. I'm also wondering about this, I hadn't noticed before, but the driveway that they've drawn to the lot has a flag off of it to the left. And I'm curious what that's for. There's another easement to Paquonicat that is not shown on this drawing that I think is at the, at the property line above the easement to Paquonicat that you can see on their drawing. So I wonder why there's another piece of driveway that seems to go off to the left there. I encourage the board, keep urging you to make there be a barrier so that the applicant can't simply use this driveway to get access to Paquonicat, as we discussed before. And I didn't quite hear what you said about moving the driveway. Was the suggestion to center it more, to curl around?
Yeah, what I had said was, if you look at where the driveway basically enters the cul-de-sac on Guinevere, to move it, to move it down, as you look at it more to the south. So it was sort of in the center of that 40-foot right away. So to block, to block a second driveway.
Okay, I see, I see. Because I remember there also being some concern that this property could be re-subdivided in the future somehow and add another lot. I see Mr. Farrier shaking his head, so maybe some of these questions can be answered.
Sure, yeah, I'll let, I'll let the team address them when you're through. Oh.
Yeah, I think that's it for me for now.
Great, Scott, you're going to take it?
Sure, just a couple of quick answers. The, the little nub on the left-hand side of the driveway is just so the people that are pulling out of their garage or people that are parking in the driveway, not in the garage, don't have to back up 200 feet down a long curving driveway out to Guinevere. It's just a place to turn around and, and drive out of the, their property to Guinevere Road. As far as the future development, the lots in Easton need 150 feet of frontage. Both, both of these lots with the creation of this roadway layout will have almost exactly 150 feet of frontage. So there is no chance for further development unless you further extended Guinevere Road via another cul-de-sac, which then would be invited, the dwellings would then be in front yard violation. So there's really no opportunity to further divide the property at all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So next up, Harry Corderi. Again, forgive me. Harry, are you with us?
Oh, sorry, that's me.
Oh, that's okay.
Can you hear me?
I can, welcome.
How you doing, 42th Guinevere Road? Again, the foundry that the people have been concerned of is, I thought I heard you mention it the first time we had the meeting, that's when we got wind of it. Getting calls to the EPA, that, that could be some kind of a condition. Was that ever looked into? Is there any kind of concern? Does the Town of Easton have any regulations as far as environmental? If there was a foundry, what would be the resort to address it? That would be a question that I think everybody's concerned of.
Okay, is, is that your only question or?
Well, I got another one too. I mean, you got to understand, if a bank goes to give a loan for this property, anytime they hear a foundry or any kind of hazardous waste, you're not going to get the loan. I'm going to tell you that right now. And my question is, is this thing going to be started and not finished? Because, you know, problems have been run into when it's in the process. Is this something that should be looked in before this starts? Or, that's my question.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie, do you, you want to take this one?
I will, I, so. Yeah, so when this question was raised previously, I, I did a couple of things. I did go out and look to see what the property historically looked like. And it looks like the area of the new lot where the home will be built is, has been undeveloped for quite a while. It, I looked back at historic aerial photographs. So I don't know that that portion of the land was ever used as part of the foundry. And in fact, some of the, the undeveloped area and grassed area looks like it would, pretty much like it does today, looking at those aerial photographs. You know, generally, it isn't the purview of the planning board to determine if a site has been contaminated historically. I, that can be, that information would be available if there was a reported release of oils or hazardous materials in the past, that information is available through the DEP Waste Site Cleanup Database.
Yes, I, I hear.
I don't know if the applicant, if the applicant had themselves, if they were aware of any releases on the property, historic releases.
Yeah, the, the question is, it's, you know, when these things happen, some.
I think you unmute, you unmuted me and muted him.
Oh, he's muted, yeah.
I think you muted Harry.
There, I know you're back.
Okay, yeah, my question is, I know you went to look, look at it. And, you know, when you see these things, you know, heavy metals don't go away, just to let you know. And they are contaminants, and it is a concern if you call up the EPA or you get on their website, it is something to look into. Now, there might not be anything there, but it is a concern that the butter neighbors should know. I mean, you got children around, and nobody wants that around their property. And if that's something that's, it usually gets more hazardous when it's disturbed. Now, I don't know what kind of digging is going to be around there. I don't know if heavy equipment is going to do it. There's going to be earth movement and put someplace else. I mean, you know, you get this and then you dump it someplace else, you know. Heavy metals, heavy metals do not go away. They're contaminants, and you guys should know that. So it is a concern, you know, nothing wrong, if there's nothing there, go for it. But I think it would be with the butters, you know, to have some kind of answer to that question or fill us in more. Because right now, I heard what you said, you went and looked physically. I don't know if you're trained or if you did any kind of a PERC test or what you have to do.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I did not say that I went out there personally. I, I reviewed historic aerial photographs.
Yeah, because the only way you find that out, you have to do, you have to do a soil test. That's the only way you can find if it's contaminated. And if, if, you know, if they want to do something, there, there are, there is a process that you can do, which would make the abuddies, I think, feel a little better. And this came up, I never knew that, but that was from Mr. Strange. Mentioned it on his first meeting, if you remember, he goes, the old foundry. When we started looking into, you look at brass, aluminum, copper, all contaminants. So what did the foundry consist of? I don't know. But again, just a question of concern.
So I may be able to offer, Mr. Chair, I may be able to offer some solace on that.
Okay.
One of, one of the.
Do me, just identify yourself for the record, please.
Aaron Wiluka, 31, rear Paquonicat Ave.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. One of the residents did call the DEP Emergency Response Unit, and they came out Christmas Eve 2021 to walk the property. They, after walking the whole property, including the area where the new home would be, had no concerns and no reason for further follow-up. Also, when I had originally purchased this property, I did have a Phase 1 21E. 21E is the environmental study that I believe Harry's referring to typically done to determine if there are any contaminants at the property. The Phase 1 that I had done determined that there was no further investigation necessary back in 2008 as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, you know, Harry, just, just to follow up, you know, we, when residents, you know, have concerns, we, we try to look into things as best we can, as much as we can, especially a town like Easton. It's an industrial town. I mean, the Ames, why did the Ames come to Easton? Because of the bog or, you know, and why was the Furness Village, you know, such a substantial neighborhood at the time because of the six foundries that were there? And, you know, there's so, through history, of course, the, you know, the 21E that Mr. Wil, Wiluka just referred to or some of the requirements that, you know, funders may have these days haven't, haven't existed all that long. You know, maybe the last 50 years or so. But, you know, looking at what, what Ms. Danielson did, looking at an aerial history of the site, looking at the existing conditions, looking at the history of excavations in, in the Guinevere Road area. You know, tell, telltale signs. And, and the team, the development team on this, you know, nobody wants to, to, it's quite a bit of liability if you sell a, a, or develop a property that, and I think you alluded to this, that, you know, that had some, some sort of environmental issue on it. So, and then Mr. Wiluka, I was, I was going to ask him, we purchased this since it was commercial property, I believe, at the time, so, you know, he, his, his funder did require him to do a 21E. So, you know, they've looked at this, there's experts who, who go in and say, and so we don't, you know, we're not just sloughing this aside, but this, these are conversations that have, you know, kind of taken place over a period of, of a few months and, and, but I appreciate you bringing it up. And I appreciate everybody's hard work on investigating. So is there any one else? I see Ann Grant's hand up, but I don't know if it ever came down.
She raised it again.
Okay, all right, Ms. Grant, go ahead. When you are unmuted.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I just wanted to say, if there have been some reports done, as Mr. Wiluka is saying, if we can make those available so we can see that, that would be great. I, I'm concerned about just taking anybody's word for it. I'm sure you can understand that. So if there's some kind of printed report that was already done, it would be great to see it. Also, I'm not sure that an aerial photograph would give you all the information you need because we're talking about, you know, a third of a property, it's a rectangle, right? So a third of it is going to become part of a residential lot. And there is currently stuff among the trees that you probably can't see from an aerial photograph. I don't know, you know, as Harry's saying, I don't, I don't know if any of this thing is, any of this is problematic, but I'm concerned seeing all of these waivers and, and just granting them. And I don't know that the board was planning to do that or not. But there's an awful lot of waivers and an awful lot of residents around this property who I think deserve to get more confirmation about the water runoff and any kind of risks that, you know, all the earth-moving equipment and stuff might pose in the area.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll quickly address the, the waivers. Just as you know, this is before us as a subdivision. So typically, you know, typically a subdivision has a, a roadway, has substantial road construction involved in it. And many of these waivers are related to that. And as you know, having participated in the previous hearings on these, where we are considering, you know, this basically as a driveway as, instead of a road to, to disturb the existing neighborhood less, to create less previous area and to disturb the environment, you know, the existing landscaping less than, you know, this driveway is much easier on what it does to the, or in terms of the work involved with the earth as opposed to a, you know, a 20, 24-foot road with, with sidewalks and curbs, which I think many of us would agree is, is a bit overkill for one house. So that, so that's why there seems to be. Um, so that, so that's why there seems to be um so many waivers. I mean, it's certainly not standard, but, but there's certainly a reason for that in this case. So, uh, okay, so any board, any board members uh or applicant reps, any more comments or questions? Um, because obviously, we're going to have to continue this. I know there's, you know, a number of things called out in um in Stephanie's plan and um and then items brought up by the board. And in terms of Ms. Grant's request uh from Mr. Wiluka, you know, we don't, as a board, we don't have the power to require someone, uh, but I, you know, if, if uh, you know, Mr. Wiluka is present in this meeting, and if he's able to, to uh, to share that, uh, I'm sure he'll be in, in touch um with you or with uh Ms. Danielson. Um, so I think at this point, we should um probably just look to continue this. Um, Ms. Fair, do you think you can have everything ready for the, our next meeting on the fourth? I think it's the fourth, sorry?
Yes, yep.
I believe so, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion for that.
Motion to continue to the next hearing, Stetson.
Second.
All right, we have a second, uh, seeing and hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, strange eye.
Stetson, I.
Anderson, I.
Now, Sarah, I.
Great, thank you, one and all.
Thank you.
Members of the public for participating.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next up, we have a site plan review for fifteen Peterson Road.
And I believe we have. Okay, I. All right, let's try this again. All right, I am trying to promote Gary Couch is the name that's listed here. I know Kim Couch, Kimberly Couch is the, Crouch is the applicant. But there we go. And let's see. Okay, so Greg, I think Kimberly Crouch has joined us.
All right, welcome, Ms. Crouch. If you, you're muted, you may want to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, do you have a, a presentation or any information you want to express?
I don't have a presentation. Um, I submitted everything with my application, and I guess I'm, I'll just tell you a little bit what I want to do.
If you, if you just, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, you could just give your name and address for the record.
Sorry, Kimberly Crouch, fifteen Peterson Road.
Right, thank you very much, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
So I have a home daycare now that have been doing, have had a home daycare now for like twenty-six or twenty-seven years. I'm licensed for ten kids. And what I would like to do is increase to what's called a small um, a larger program. So when I go over ten children, I, my family, we won't be allowed to live in the house. We have to move out, and then basically, it becomes, I guess you could call it center base or preschool. It's just the state requires that we don't live in the house, we can't live in the, in the home. So I'm exploring the option of, you know, moving out and making this just be a whole preschool. We've lived here so long that the whole house is basically set up for the program, the backyard, everything. So I have the space, state requires so much square footage inside and outside in the play area. So that part's all good, but um, in a conversation I had, I think it was with Stephanie one day on the phone, I was trying to find out some other information, and she let me know that I had to, you know, do, do an application with you guys also. And um, the parking, we had to assure that we would have enough parking and stuff. So this is why I've submitted the application to see if we could, if we know, we could, if this, if you guys approve this, then I'll move forward and deal with the um, the building department, they have to come in, I have to get stuff from them for the state also. So I don't, I don't know what else you need to know.
Okay, um, so Stephanie, so, so we were looking for a home, family home daycare large.
Right.
So, and did she, and it's a special permit from the ZBA, right? So has that been approved, or what do we?
Uh.
We're doing.
I, I thought it was allowed by right.
Um, I'm, in the zoning, what did I note here? It says line fourteen under accessory uses.
Right, so this wouldn't be an accessory use. It is, she's, they're proposing this as a primary use, once they move out. Currently, it is an accessory use, um, and it would be classified as small. So in the, uh, let's see, section B three, childcare center or school-aged childcare program as a primary is allowed by right.
Okay.
Within the residential district.
So, okay, so what she's applying for then is a childcare center, not a, not the, the large, not whatever the other.
Right.
Okay, not a, right, not a fo- not a family home daycare large, okay, good.
Right. Right, which would, again, would be something that's operating outside of, I mean, in addition to living there as a resident.
Okay.
It's a change of views.
Right, yep.
And, and also, you're right, which would trigger a site plan review. Um, can the board see the plan? Or do you see a, a, a field, a green field?
We can see the plan.
Yeah, I can see the plan, yeah.
Okay. So they're, they're not proposing any changes other than lining the parking area that they're proposing.
For the three spaces.
For, right, currently there is, I believe, a grassed area where my hand is located here.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And, and here, it looks like there's, from an aerial photograph I looked at, it looks like there's an RV parked here. So currently, there, they have these three, these four park, three or four parking spaces. And they're proposing employee parking on the top stack of parking with drop-off in the lower three. So presumably, the, um, what they're suggesting is, what Ms. Crouch is suggesting is that the employees will arrive ahead of, of course, drop-off occurring, parked in the top half, and drop-off occurs twice a day. Uh, perhaps some other children might be dropped off once a day, but that's not when everyone's coming in. So that if there was a need for someone to leave, one of the employees, or if there was an emergency, these three spaces would be open. So that, that was, that was my primary concern, just that these parking spaces are stacked. And once someone's parked in the top stack, if there are vehicles in the bottom stack, you, you may not be able to get out quickly if that's needed. And um, I mean, as far as lighting, it looks like they have sufficient lighting for arrivals and departure during non-daylight hours. And the fire uh captain just made a recommendation uh that uh thorough code analysis be done to see if there are any changes that would be necessary to maintain and keep, you know, the health and welfare of the children safe.
You, you mean on the inside, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so, Ms. Crouch, so how many, how many, I'm, how many cars do you expect at, at drop-off time?
Well.
Pickup time.
Say I have, if, if, um, if everything went really well in a perfect world, let's say fifteen to twenty kids over, and now over about two, two and a half hours, there could be, you know, anywhere from ten to twenty kids getting dropped off. What happens now is they all come in, the parents. I mean, we live on a side road, it's a small street, so they do either park in the driveway, or they park on the street. They walk the kid to the door, and the child comes in and the parent leaves. They don't come any further. Um, with the pandemic, we had to do things a lot different when we reopened. And we, the parents and myself all agree that just dropping, bringing the kids to the door and having them come in made everything a lot easier, the transition for the child. And so we're going to continue to do that. We've, I've already decided, and the parents agreed. So it's just basically, the kids come up to the door, the parent can come in if, you know, of course, if they need to, for whatever reason. But as a rule, ninety-nine percent of the time, they don't stay. They just drop off, or they come and pick up at the door and the child leaves.
Okay, so you, you sort of have a, a history of queuing in the street, which you're just going to continue, depending on when the folks are there. Lining up in the street, right?
Well, they could do that too, yeah, they do that.
I mean, I mean, if you have ten to fifteen, I mean, if, if seven people come at once and you only have three spaces, right? So there must be some program you have that you've worked out through the years. Um, so, so board, are, I mean, obviously, this isn't really a, uh, I mean, it's not a plan to the standards that we normally take, but it got this far, so are we okay with this?
Oh, and now, Mr. Strange? I believe your rules and regulations allow the board to waive the requirement for a formal plan, so that was part of the application, a request.
All right, no, I, I'm familiar with our rules and regs, I was just wondering if the board was okay, given the numbers that we're talking, if they were okay with this layout.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up question on, on, on your question, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, based on the square footage of the building, what's the maximum amount of children that you can have in there?
Um, well, when you do the square footage, the, the state, the state says thirty-five square feet per child. So technically, they could come in here and license me for around thirty kids. That's, I'm never going to take that many kids, I would have to have more employees, class, I would have to have more classrooms. It's basically going to be one class, no more than twenty kids. Um, you know, if I, thirteen kids would be great, but it wouldn't, I wouldn't do more than twenty. I don't think, if you, my house is small, it, the space, when you come in, it's very open. I would never take that many kids.
And what's the most you've had at any time up to this point?
I'm licensed for ten children and I've had, you know, but it doesn't mean I've only had ten in one day. It just means ten at a time. Sometimes I've had kids come before and after school, get on the bus, come back after, you know, come back after school or just come on vacations. So I could have thirteen or fourteen kids coming and going, but only have ten here at one time.
And is your street a through street, or is it a dead end?
Um, I guess I can't really call it a dead end, but if you go all the way down, it's a cul-de-sac, but there is um, there is like one little street you could turn to go around and pull up, speak behind us.
Okay. I'm fine.
Okay, well, anybody, anyone else? Okay, um, any members of the public? I don't see any hands raised. If someone is, is so inclined, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the site plan, Stetson.
Anderson, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, strange eye.
Stetson, I.
Anderson, I.
Now, Sarah, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, that's everybody, right?
Yeah.
All right, motion passes. Good luck, Mrs. Couch, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, next up, we have a public hearing oh man, for um proposed zoning amendments. Um, this is one large um post, uh, what's the word I want? You can, you can, one, one large um thing you can read. Excuse me, I have such a migraine right now, I can't think straight. So Stephanie, do you want to read us in?
Sure.
That was trying to say, so.
Okay, in accordance with the provisions of chapter forty-eight, section five, MGL, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty PM. This hearing will be held virtually via Zoom for the purpose of receiving public comments concerning the following amendments to the Eastern zoning bylaw, chapter two thirty-five of the Eastern Town Code. Self-storage Appendix A-one and A-two G, two thirty-five fifty-one QSGOD, which is the Queesit Smart Growth Overlay District, E, permitted and prohibited uses. Outdoor dining is an allowed use. Flexible Development, section two thirty-five thirty-seven, front yard setback. Furnace Village District, Appendix A-dash-two, lot depth standard. Bed and breakfast, section two thirty-five thirty-nine, appendix A-one and A-two. Kennels, section two thirty-five fourteen, appendix A-one and appendix A-two, dog kennel. And in-law apartment, section two thirty-five forty-four C-four. Copies of the proposed zoning bylaw amendments are available for review at the Planning and Economic Development Office at one thirty-six Elm Street, Northeastern, Mass, during regular business hours. And the draft zoning bylaw amendments are also available on the Planning Department website at www.easton.me dot U S slash departments slash planning and community development slash index dot P H P. This notice is also provided at masspublicnotices dot board. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, um, so Stephanie, you want to go through these, how do you want to handle this?
I will share my screen. And we can start and go through them. And again, just confirm that you can see them, it's, I don't know, for some reason, they're not popping up in the usual place.
Yep, we can see them.
Okay. So the first item um is for a change to self, uh, an addition of self-storage as a use to the table of uses. In both A-one, which is the, actually, do I have? I just noticed an error. This should say Appendix A-one, Table of Use Regulations. And it should say standard zoning districts, not special zoning districts. And then Appendix A-two, Table of Use Regulations, Special Zoning Districts. And the word "commercial", which is, you'll see twenty-four self-storage, is in parentheses under Table A-one, should also be in parentheses under Table Two. The board added that at the last meeting, just to clarify that this is commercial self-storage, meaning it's rent, it's space for rent, for income. And then we added a description for self-star- storage.
Um, just, just wondering, under the table on principal uses, uh, E. Retail business and consumer services establishments. Under Eliam, I'm sorry, and I think that's a typo, right, N M? Is that just, just supposed to be an N? The first, it's in the first table.
It, it's, well, it's, I'm not even sure, it should be an N, yes. Yep, yes.
So boards, members, questions, comments on this first article?
I think it's fine. I did go back and look at the definitions in our existing. Bylaws after the last meeting, we actually do have a definition for self-storage already. And my only suggestion is that we just make sure that it's consistent. Or that we remove it from the other area where it's defined and just go with, with this one. Just to avoid confusion. Well, I, I'm comfortable with, with. With this one, just because we kind of went through it last week. Although, didn't we, didn't we talk about removing? The, uh. Yeah, the, the reference to the four hundred feet. Think that might be the old version, possibly?
Was not here, so I'll hold it up.
Let me, let me check. Now that you mention it, because I thought we corrected those other issues as well, so let me. So that's, this is what I have.
Is that, does that have all the modifications that we made last time?
Well, it is supposed to have all of the modifications that we made the last time. I can, I can tell you that.
I know we discussed the four hundred.
I mean, I do remember that. I don't remember whether, um. I'm, I'm looking for other directions to see if everything else. I mean, we, we have the change here. And the change for the solar photovoltaic. Well, I guess the question is, does, does the board want that removed? I can honestly tell you, Bob, that I remember the discussion.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would remove it. I, and, and actually, I think it's, if you remove it, it's pretty, it's pretty similar to what we already have in the bylaws. Which I think is a fine definition.
I am also looking in the, um.
It's in a funny place. It's under warehouse. So it's under W, and then it says warehouse mini or self-storage. That's where it's hiding.
You're right, you're correct. So I guess the question is, do we keep the, and that's exactly how it reads. It reads. Warehouse comma, mini or self-storage. Establishment providing individual storage units for long or short-term rental to persons or businesses. Which is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and honestly, I think this conveys the same message if we remove that four hundred. Foot reference anyway, so I'm, I'm fine with either one of them. I just think we should, as for the reasons we discussed last time, get rid of the four hundred foot reference. That's my only comment.
I'm trying to mark it up.
I, I, I think warehouse versus self-storage are two very different things. And maybe should be separated.
Yeah, so if you're, if you're, almost, if you're fine with this version and definition. Cause I know we made other changes, we added in commercial, we did some things. If we remove the four hundred foot reference, I'm fine using this definition.
Yeah, it's, it's the same as.
Yeah, absolutely.
Stephanie, when you do the edits, do you do it in Word or do you do it in PDF form?
I'm doing it in the PDF right now.
When you go to update it, will you be doing it in Word? Should we just update it and finalize it then?
I mean, I can do it in the Word document now.
I think it's better because, fine, you just save it as PDF.
The difference is, I was working, I was. Attending the meeting from home and I don't have full access to the files from home. That's why we did it. Through the PDF last week, but yes, I can do that.
I know that drill. And, um.
Traditional.
Hey, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, I have to, I have to exit this meeting. We're, we're good quorum wise, right? Right? All right, I have to, I have to take care of something on the whole front. I apologize.
Stephanie, the standard is as opposed to special.
Yes. Traditional zoning, that's what it is. All right, then the next one was the Queesit Smart Growth Overlay District, just adding outside dining. At the last meeting, the board did ask why Subzone A, it wasn't a by right. And the reason was restaurants aren't allowed in Subzone A, so it would make sense to allow. Outside dining. And I don't think. I'm sorry, and the board did not vote a chair when Greg left. So if I could just ask that you vote. For a temporary chair.
I, I move for Deb Balseric to be the temporary chair.
All those in favor?
Stetson, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Do I, do I get to vote? I, Deborah Balseric. In favor.
All right, then I don't think there were any changes to the next one. The explanation here was that the language in the bylaw. States that. Dog kennels are not allowed in the residential districts. And that is any. Collection of animal, dogs, five or more. So it just makes the table consistent with the language in the bylaw. And then flexible development, this was just stating specifically. That unless allowed by the Planning and Zoning Board. Front yard setbacks within a flexible development shall be twenty-five feet. And we added unless specifically allowed by the Planning and Zoning Board. That side yard, side rear yards shall be at least ten feet.
Yeah, that was correct, from what I remember.
Okay, going to bed and breakfast. This was. To, again, to just create consistency within the. Language and definitions, I think, of, not the definition, but within the tables that. This would be a Planning and Zoning Board special permit. For bed and breakfast between four and ten rooms for rent. So yes, and this was to make it consistent with section two thirty-five thirty-nine. And then the lot to depth with applies specifically to the Furnace Village District. Where this was something that was contemplated, this ratio. Early on in the discussion for the foundries, the five, I'm sorry, Furnace Village District zoning. And. As I understand it, it, you know, it was, it, it just doesn't make sense for the district that it would render. Existing lots non-conforming.
So we're leaving apartments and motels having at least a hundred and sixty.
Yes, and those should not, I don't know why those are highlighted. They should not be highlighted, because that's not changing. I think it just, when I highlighted it, I grabbed it all. And then on in-law apartments, the change that was made here. Is that any front-facing entrance must be subordinate in appearance to the main entrance. And that would allow a front entrance if someone, you know, accessibility makes the apartment more accessible. But at the same time, doesn't make it look like it's actually two. Separate dwelling units. And the requirement for numbering the unit. So that fire and police can properly access the building still remains. And I don't think we had any other changes to the solar photovoltaic installations. And then the change to the accessory structures. Refers to the definition found in section two thirty-five sixty. A accessory, any accessory structure should be subordinate in size and appearance to the principal structure. And I think. This last one came up after the last meeting. Greg was going through. The bylaw for a whole nother purpose and realized that when the. Queesit Commercial District Ratio of Office Space to Residential was updated. Changed from the. Two to. One ratio or two-thirds commercial. It was changed from two-thirds commercial to one-third residential, to one-third residential, two-thirds commercial. Where it actually referenced it as a ratio in the. Bylaw text, it was not changed. So this just corrects.
Would be two-thirds residential.
Correct. Which is a one to two ratio of office to restaurant or. I'm sorry, to residential. And so we were looking.
Right, right, doesn't say that. One relation to two businesses or something.
So this only includes the section that needs to be made specific. If you go to footnote four, you'll see I have the ellipsis before. So after the number four in parentheses, I have the ellipsis, which indicates that there's language that goes before that. That references the one, the. One-third commercial to two-thirds residential, which is, you'll, you'll remember that was changed. Was that in November of? Twenty twenty? I don't think it was last spring. Because that was the Furnace Village zoning. That had previously been changed.
So this is where it references the ratio that we're correcting it at already. Two-thirds elsewhere.
Right. And it, it's interesting, because I, I thought we had caught that. I, I remember that being pointed out to me before town meeting, and I thought we had corrected it in the supplement. But it didn't make its way to the E-code people, so it. Must have been overlooked.
So do we have to vote on these individually or all together, I think?
You can vote on them individually or you can vote them as a slate.
Do we have to do that before we open it up to the public or?
You need to open up, you, you do need to open it up to the public. Thank you for the reminder.
Are there any members of the public that are here? That would like to comment or ask a question on any of these amendments, proposed amendments? Don't think so.
I'm seeing many stands.
I do not either, so seeing that there are none, does. And no one on the board has any further commentary, does anyone? Want to make a motion for either one or all of the ones that we just discussed?
Stephanie, should we first motion to close the public hearing? Do we have to do that in the circumstance?
Yes.
I'll, I'll move to close the public hearing, Stetson.
Anderson, second.
All those in favor, Balseric, aye.
Stetson, aye.
Anderson, aye.
All right, the public hearing is closed, so. Now, if anybody would like to make a motion to approve one or all of the proposed amendments that. We just discussed.
Second, Stetson.
All those in favor, Balseric, aye. All right, unanimous.
Stephanie, this is Suzanne. Just want to point out that the public hearing was only for the first seven.
Oh, I thought we had included the public hearing for the last one. Okay, so I apologize. You'll need to. So you're only closing the hearing for the first seven. Um, you'll need to, so you're only closing the hearing for the first seven, you'll need to
Do you have another hearing for the?
So we have to open a public hearing next meeting for the other one, three?
Yes. So I think, I think what you want to do is actually vote to hear that at the next meeting.
So we don't necessarily need to.
I don't know if you need to re-vote, because you're, you were only voting on the ones that were part of the public hearing, technically. Well, I'm going to kind of.
Should we defer to our attorney?
Run into a public hearing issue, yeah, we, I mean, I, I think, let's, let's just go ahead and, and make a motion to, um, have a public hearing on the other, the other, uh, three next, at the next hearing. And I'll, I'll make that motion, Stetson.
No, I think it's just the last one. Which was added.
Is that just, is that just the clerical error, Stephanie?
Yes, yes.
Okay, alright, so motion to hold a hearing on the last item for, at the next hearing, Stetson.
All those in favor, Balsarek, aye.
Stetson, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Alright.
Although, wait a minute, wait, so, so, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, it's actually, you are correct. Bob, it is the last three.
It's the last three, okay.
Can we, can we edit our motion to reflect that, or to be, okay?
If you haven't voted, if someone can actually, yeah, someone can amend the motion.
I've already voted.
We already voted, so do we need to re-vote?
Suzanne, you got that?
Oh, you.
For the last three, that will be held on April fourth, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Got it.
Alright, I have to tell you, I think these are the most amendments, you know, with the, with the least amount of text associated with them in, in total than, uh, than I, than the board has ever had before.
That means we're getting better.
It, it does, well, I, I don't, yeah.
It's a little cosmetic.
Is, uh, do we just have, is that it for our amendments, is it just, um, our minutes?
Yes.
Which, um, I have to say, I did not actually have a chance to read them, but I can read them really quickly right now, I don't know if anyone else.
I read them.
Anybody, we don't have Peter, so we don't have any suggestions, I guess for any edits.
I don't know if history is anything, I think, um, I think that Suzanne is doing a great job, and, and we do some, a little bit of editing before they go to you folks, so.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second, Stetson.
All those in favor? Balsarek, aye.
Stetson, aye.
Did that, do we get everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright, well then, I guess we just have one final, uh, request then, who wants to bring us home?
Motion to adjourn, Stetson.
Second.
All those in favor, Balsarek, aye.
Stetson, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Alright, well, thank you, wow, this might be a record as of late, it's before eight PM, so.
Well done.
Well done, Madam Chair.
Actually, this might be like my second one.
Well, then, yeah.
We have to keep this trend up.
Yes.
Alright, thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.